Countries.
And finally, I wonder if what you think the future of global hip hop is because so much of it is, as you're telling us, is about social change has been the backbone of, of social movements. Is that going to continue, do you think, Ome Congo?
I'm concerned about it. When I, when I told Sanita I was doing this interview, she said to let the audience know, I hope to see rap music being used for the purpose it was made. Speaking about things that are wrong, that are violating human rights, such as the women being banned from going to school in Afghanistan. As a global citizen, we are all at risk if one nation is ordered to stop growing. That's what I want to see. I want to see hip hop grow, but when it gets more famous in countries, it tends to get more commercialized and the messages in the music start to decline.
Ome Congo Dbinga is a poet, rapper, and professor at American University where he teaches a course on global hip hop. I feel like we've all been schooled by you today, Professor. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
And you're listening to Here and Now.
Homeless Entrepreneurs. It's an NGO helping hundreds of people around the globe find jobs and homes, all started by this man.
I don't know if you want to call it depression, but it was definitely a very hard moment in which I needed a lot of strength to, to get back on my feet.
Now he's helping the unhoused in Barcelona get back on their feet. Next time on The World.
Catch up with what's going on in the world, Monday through Thursdays at 3:00 PM on Radio IQ. Radio IQ gets corporate underwriting support from Olio Financial Planning, helping people answer the question, do I have enough? More information at meetolio.com.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston, from MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and Simulink software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery and engineering in science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And SEED, SEED's D S O one Daily Synbiotic is a probiotic and prebiotic formulated with strains to support gut, skin, and heart health at S E E D dot com slash public.
It's Here and Now. Are you planning a trip to New York this fall? Good luck finding a rental. Normally Airbnb has more than 20,000 hosts with short-term listings in the city, but only a third of them are now available after the city enacted a new law last week requiring registrations and effectively limiting the short-term rental market. It's both to crack down on illegal rentals and the noisy, sometimes violent parties that take place in them, and to try to stem the loss of affordable housing that's caused by short-term rentals. Airbnb, Verbo, and other short-term rental companies vigorously oppose the law, but here we are. So a week in, what is going on? Robin Farzad, host of the public radio program Full Disclosure, has taken a look. Robin, hello.
Hey, how are you?
I'm good. And, and yet, this is, for some people, going to be hard to hear because they depend on this when they go to New York. Flesh out the new roles, uh, rules a little more. A two-guest limit, and hosts have to be there. Big change right there.
Yeah, I mean, it effectively, they call it a de facto ban Airbnb, and I think that's fair to say. And it's fleshed out by the fact that the number of short-term rental listings has plummeted by 70%. You went from around 23,000 in August to about 7,000 currently, right after the new regulations went into an effect, according to Air, inside Airbnb, which is a proxy. And yes, the rules are, short-term rentals are allowed if you register with the city and you actually live in the apartment or the house, and you have to be there during this day, and you can only have two guests. So, I mean, that throws a lot of sand into the gears of what Airbnb is all about. And a lot of people are just opting out of this. And, and the guests, meanwhile, the people who book can still go on, uh, kind of illegal gray market Airbnbs, but they are risking it, as are the hosts, for a penalty.
Right. Well, I was going to ask you that. Do you think that this is all just putting an end to those kinds of rentals, which might make for more real rentals, you know, to people who are trying to live in the city? Or do you think people are moving to some sort of a shadow rental?
I think it's rich to think that the hotel lobby and the hospitality industry were worried. We're torchbearers for affordable housing in Manhattan. I think they were convenient, you know, bedmates in this case. You have tremendous disruption in the city. We've discussed the canyons of empty office space before, which some developers want incentive to be able to come in and tear them out and, and build a residential. But what is being threatened here is this whole new income class. You could look at these properties, if you were a New Yorker, if you were an absentee owner, you could say, in addition to the fact that I have this overpriced, you know, pied-à-terre in Manhattan, now I have a huge earnings stream that can come out of it because Airbnb let me do that. If you lived in Tuscany, if you were, uh, an oligarch's cousin who had a pad in North Miami Beach, parts of it are called Little Moscow after all, right? You could get income without it having to be, you know, condo board approved tenants coming in. And that, that has its own perils. It's caused a party culture, there are nuisance complaints, and the city has lost tax revenue, and this is the net result of it.
Yeah. Uh, look, uh, perhaps the two-guest limit is limiting some of these wild parties that were taking place. I mean, maybe some of them were nice graduation parties, but let's face it, most of them were noisy and also, you know, dangerous. Um, but that has also meant that families, you know, can't go to these Airbnbs with kids. But then, how is it being policed? Because I'm reading that you might see an Airbnb advertised, you know, on the, on the site, posting a registration number with the city, but that might not be real.
That's right. And it's brutal to go in there. I mean, to have a police state doing this. It's Orwellian, but there is a bit of a snitch culture coming out of this. You know, Scott and I briefly discussed that there are, uh, long-term owners who are resentful of the Airbnb units, that the fact that you have a, a rotating, you know, list of people who come in, they don't observe the trash and recycling rules, uh, you know, this complaint that all of Manhattan smells like weed smoke. And again, not to just focus on Manhattan, but I think it's a paradigm for other cities, for Miami, for Los Angeles, for Austin, especially with this delayed return to office, where so many people took for granted that they could just go and flex outside of a hotel, set up, you know, buy a townhouse, and Airbnb would take care of everything on the backend and the credit card company. And to think that Airbnb is worth $96 billion, Marriott International by comparison, which is synonymous with the hotel industry, is worth $60 billion. Airbnb was just founded 15 years ago.
Wow. Uh, well, okay, but back to New York and its new rules. Uh, New Jersey's probably happy. You know, the people there who want to rent Airbnbs across the water, but New York isn't the only place. Uh, Dallas has banned rentals in some neighborhoods because of the loud parties. Uh, in San Francisco, you can only list your property on Airbnb for 90 days. What policies are you seeing as other cities try to address this?
Well, this is where I get to try to invoke, uh, you know, Twist the Beastie Boy lyrics, where listen all y'all, it's an arbitrage. So Jersey City is happy about this, White Plains is happy about this. You'll see areas in the periphery, especially where there's mass transit access to these huge tourist hubs, say, you know, well, look the other way, Airbnb, have at it. And that has put a floor under the housing market there. Again, I urge you to look at these as people saying, uh, we want to justify these home prices that have skyrocketed by putting an income floor under it. And the income floor, especially in, uh, hotel-deprived areas, would be significant for mortgage holders. And this could stunt the entire redevelopment of all these downtowns that we talk about. So the implications across culture, across economy, commercial real estate are ginormous.
Amazing. Can I hear those numbers again? 80 billion for Airbnb, 60 for Marriott?
A desire to stand with me for a moment of silence, and then if you would, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for September 12, 2023. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings can be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokecountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn all cell phones off or place on silent. Item A is opening ceremonies. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. Norwood?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Item B, request to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda items. Are there any requests? Any requests, fellow board members? Mr. Kaywood?
No changes, Madam Chair.
And Mr. Lubeck?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Item C, proclamations, resolutions, recognitions, and awards. Resolution recognizing Eric Kohler, Parks Administrator, for his exemplary service to Roanoke County, Mr. Richard Kaywood, County Administrator.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, it is my distinct, uh, privilege this afternoon to bring Eric Kohler before you. And I've wanted to do this for quite some time. There have been a few things that have happened that have, uh, delayed, uh, him coming today. Um, but he's one of our employees that's, I think, a true genius in his field. But I, I got to know him first by his work, and then later realized, uh, who was actually behind the scenes. So, uh, probably what Eric is, uh, best known for is he's kind of the mastermind behind Illuminights. So right now, I guess you all are busy, uh, putting Illuminights together, and I think we're going to be approaching 700,000 lights this year. But, uh, in addition to deciding, you know, what to put where and how to lay out the course, there's a whole lot of work just to make sure that we have something that will actually function when we turn it on every day. Uh, and he's been engaged in that since the beginning. And, and one of the things that really sticks in my mind when I, when I think about his work is every time I've been to Illuminights, he's been there. Uh, and I always go on the last night because it's my birthday. So, uh, our last night's obviously December 30th. So I've seen him there every, every December. Uh, and then, and all the other times that I've been there, he's always been out there. So if there's ever anything wrong, or just to see, you know, how folks, uh, liked, liked the course that year. Uh, so, but his talents aren't limited to that. Uh, and I brought my Visualite. I won't try to actually operate it, but, uh, you know, we have something else we do with the trail, you know, with these, these critters. Uh, so we have the T-Rexes of it. And I'll hold it. So the, the first year we did that, or the first season, uh, the, the folks that, uh, I guess sold us the dinosaurs kind of had some ideas as to how that should be laid out. And it was good. I went through it. Uh, but then Eric looked at how that was done and said, I've got a much better idea. I can take all of these dinosaurs and I can make this a much more engaging experience. And sure enough, he did. So they were arranged differently, and, and I think it made it a much more enjoyable experience. And in fact, actually, the very first time I was out at, at the trail, we were going to shoot a little video for it. Uh, he was literally inside one of the dinosaurs, something had shorted out, and it looked like a surgeon. It was all kind of cut open, and his arms were down in there, and he was bringing it back to life because we realized that they weren't quite as waterproof as we had hoped at first, and they'd gotten rained on. Uh, so I just really want to recognize, uh, his work. And, uh, while we're not exactly on a quarterly cycle of recognizing folks, uh, because it's been a little while since we've done this, I just think he has truly gone above and beyond the call of duty to just bring a lot of joy to a lot of county residents and a lot of visitors just with his work, uh, out there at Explorer Park. And we are just so blessed to have somebody of his level of talent and creativity, uh, on our staff.
Thank you so much. Eric, would you like to say anything?
I would just like to thank, uh, Mr. Blunt, Mr. Hayes, for allowing me to be a part of the Parks and Rec team. Um, there's a lot of great people that work for Parks and Rec, and, um, you know, I've been fortunate enough to be a part of that. And, um, you know, thank you for recognizing, um, my accomplishments so far, so.
I could just tell you from personal experience, um, the times that we have gone to Illuminight, it's, it's every year, it's improved, it's better, and it's incredibly impressive. I have taken my grandkids every year to the T-Rex Trail. They're amazed, they're afraid. I mean, it's very realistic, and it's, it's great, though. They, they love it. They really do. So you are an artisan, and we really appreciate your good work.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to say anything?
Well, not, not only are you an artist, but you, you have mechanical, technical abilities. So that's like, you got the left side and the right side of your brain both helping out. And, and that's, that's a big, that's a big, big deal. And, uh, I didn't make out to the dinosaurs, but, uh, Illuminights is just fantastic and more light. So I'm sure you'll find some way to weave all that in there and make it, uh, make it really special for us this year. But thank you for recognizing Eric.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to, like a comment. You know, there's light shows all over the United States. Uh, I've been to one in Washington at Nationals Park called Enchanted. Well, that's in a baseball park, you know, so you go there and you don't expect to see lights. And it's, it's a large light show. But I can tell you this, this light show is in a natural setting, which makes it more like a winter wonderland, if you will. So Enchanted has nothing on Eric Kohler and Explorer Park and Illuminights. And I just want you to know that. And I come back from that show, and this show is just more of a, of a winter wonderland. And it's because of the creativity that you give it. And, uh, wow, when I hear there's more lights this year, this, what have we got? It's always something new to look forward to every year. So keep up the good work. We appreciate it, and so does every citizen in Roanoke County. I've never heard a single person ever say anything bad about Illuminights. It's always been great, good experience. Even some people haven't gone, believe it or not, and they keep wanting to go. And so hopefully this year they'll be able to do that. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Well, I will say there has been one complaint, is that we're going to do it longer. But, um, I, I do want to recognize, or thank you for recognizing him because it, I mean, it is very important what, what we're providing to not only our citizens, but, you know, people all over this area come to Illuminights. And, uh, you know, it was really, it's really nice also to see the pictures here in front of us because, you know, for a first meeting we haven't had, listen to Glimmer the whole time.
Ah, there you go.
I, I don't know why. I think several, I know I was out at Explorer, and you and your crew were setting it up before it got beautiful. And it was, uh, sort of a nasty, windy day, and, and you guys were just having all kinds of trouble getting everything together. But I was watching you and the rest of your crew struggling with trying to put all the pieces together. And it's, as, as Mr. Radford said, there's a, there's a very specific technical skill, but also, uh, an artistic creative skill. So thank you for everything you do for us.
The winds, the winds have been really the challenge the last few years, I'm sure. So we have a resolution. And Madam Clerk, would you read the resolution, please? Certainly. Resolution recognizing Eric Kohler, Parks Administrator, for his exemplary service to Roanoke County. Whereas in March 2016, Eric Kohler was hired by Roanoke County as a parks supervisor, and during his tenure has been promoted to Parks Administrator. And whereas Eric has been responsible for coordinating operational districts of the Parks Recreation and Tourism, special events, and other key administrative functions of the Parks Division. And whereas Eric coordinated the Parks Division's support of many successful special events over the years, including the annual Illuminights Walk of Lights Trail, T-Rex Trail, Green Hill Park Kites Festival, Touch a Truck, and Nights Crossing events. And whereas since 2019, Eric has served as the primary designer and installation coordinator of the Illuminights Walk of Lights Trail at Explorer Park, which has been, which has been enjoyed more than 200,000 visitors. And whereas since 2022, Eric has served as the primary designer and installation coordinator of the T-Rex Trail at Explorer Park, which has been enjoyed by more than 25,000 visitors. And whereas since 2016, Eric has played a key role in the parks maintenance operations, including supervising the parks' grounds and patrol crews, performing the annual inspections and maintenance of all 30 community playgrounds, and soliciting and supervising more than 3,000 annual hours of volunteerism in county parks. And whereas Eric's positive attitude and commitment to his work makes a difference every day in many of the Roanoke County citizens' lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County expresses its deepest appreciation and the appreciation of the citizens of Roanoke County to Eric Kohler for his dedicated service to Roanoke County, and further the Board of Supervisors does express its best wishes for continued success in the future. Thank you. And so is there a motion for the resolution?
Motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
And will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you.
So next item on the agenda is resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County to Lori Hancock, Payroll Technician upon her retirement after more than 32 years of service. Ms. Lori Gerhart, Director of Finance and Management Services, and Amy Meacham, Finance Manager, Payroll.
Good afternoon. I'm just going to say a few short words, and then I'm going to hand it over to Amy Meacham, who was Lori's supervisor for the last several years. But Lori Hancock and I started working together back in 1992. I was a financial analyst for the county back in those days, and Lori actually worked in utility billing. And so we have known each other for a really long time and have really enjoyed, um, working together and in all the different positions that she has held in our finance department. And, um, when she became a part of payroll, because, you know, we eventually, um, turned the Water Authority and turned our utility billing over, and I no longer had that in our department, she became a part of payroll. And Lori was always very interesting to have in meetings because she has this slow draw about her, and she just kind of sits in the back and is really quiet. You know, and a lot of times in those meetings, everybody has something to say, and, you know, people are talking over each other, and Lori just sits back and just would like ponder everything. And then this little slow voice would speak up. And she always had something very pertinent to say, you know. So I always teased with her that I always wanted her in the room, um, because she had a different perspective than other people did, and I appreciated that, and I enjoyed working with her. So, um, and we're very happy that she got to retire. You know, we all work, and that's what we want to do. And so the team has come out to support her, and we thank the crowd for coming, uh, to support her. So I will turn it over to Amy.
Um, I'm Amy Meacham, Finance Manager for Payroll here at the county. And I have had the pleasure, and I mean a pleasure, to work with Ms. Hancock the past seven years. Um, she is our faithful historian. Um, her file cabinet sometimes was like the Mary Poppins bag. Um, we would be looking for an answer. I'd be looking for, why did we have that policy? Why did we change this? And inevitably, Lori would pull out a file, or an email, or a policy from 1999, and hand it to me. Um, and I, I very much appreciated that because that does help all of us as we go through the process, being new. Um, she has also been a very caring and helpful teammate to all of the payroll and all of finance who are here to support her today. Um, she's a very valuable and knowledgeable payroll technician to the employees of Roanoke County, and in her later years for the Western Virginia Regional Jail. Um, so we not only pay the county, we pay the jail, we also pay the Roanoke County Public Schools. So she was very, um, very good at, um, chipping in and helping. Um, personally, Lori has a very, um, deep love for her family and her church. Um, she took mission trips to North Dakota every year. Um, she has a love of baseball. I mean, I do, she sits at that baseball game with, and she's on that little, her, her keeping track, score, whole, whole nine yards. Um, and, um, the most impressive thing I know about her is she loves to travel. Lori actually has a notebook, and in this notebook that she shared with me one afternoon before she decided to retire, she has pictures of all the places that she would like to travel. And I found that very endearing. Um, and I hope she gets to do all of them. Um, so as Dr. Seuss has said, your mountain is waiting to be on your way. We thank you, and I hope you find joy in every single day.
So, um, I know that there's a resolution. Would the clerk please read the resolution? Resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County to Lori Hancock, Payroll Technician upon her retirement after more than 32 years of service. Whereas Lori Hancock was hired on December 3, 1990, as a part-time account clerk, and moved to full-time on June 8, 1992, as an account clerk in utility billing, and then hired on June 19, 2004, as a payroll technician during her tenure with Roanoke County. And whereas Ms. Hancock retired on August 1, 2023, after 32 years and eight months of devoted, faithful, and expert service with the county. And whereas during her time serving Roanoke County, Ms. Hancock was responsible for providing excellent customer payroll services to the Roanoke County Departments and Virginia West, Western Virginia Regional Jail Authority. And whereas during recent years, Mrs. Hancock was focused primarily on payroll processing for Virginia, Western Virginia Regional Jail employees. And whereas Ms. Hancock was instrumental in applying the new global human resources system to payroll policies and procedures to ensure all Western Virginia Regional Jail employees were paid accurately and efficiently every two weeks. And whereas Ms. Hancock was supportive of and worked closely with other payroll team members to help process and ensure the accuracy of the bi-weekly payroll for all Roanoke County employees. And whereas Ms. Hancock has proven herself to be an exemplary employee with an excellent attendance record, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia, expresses its deepest appreciation and the appreciation of the citizens of Roanoke County to Lori Hancock for 32 years and eight months of capable, loyal, and dedicated service to Roanoke County, and further the Board of Supervisors does express its best wishes for a happy and productive retirement. Thank you very much. I'll make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And so will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. So would you like to take an opportunity to say anything? This is your moment.
Well, they, they tell me I can be long-winded, so I'll try to keep it short. I didn't prepare anything. But the last time I was in this, um, room was, I don't know how many years ago, but we had a, a Relay for Life team. We had that for a few years. And they, the board declared when the relay was, you know, the Relay for Life, the, the Cancer Society. And it's always been supported when we brought things before the board. And it's always been supportive when we brought things before the board. Mr. Mahoney, you weren't sitting there, you were over there. That's right. I started payroll when Lawson went into effect and that was May of 99. And that was a big learning curve. But in a previous job, I had done human resources, but a lot of it was what payroll was doing at the time. There's been many changes and there's going to continue to be changes. And I wish everybody luck. And we'll stop there.
Any comments of board members?
Yeah.
Mr. Radford?
Lori, it sounds like you could teach my QuickBooks and direct deposit a few things in my personal business. Hey, it was great hearing the stories just now about what you've done, your hobbies and stuff that you like. And just the best wishes that you can get to travel and see all those sights because it's a beautiful earth we live in and there's plenty of things to see. So bless you with good health, you know, to see all those things.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. North?
Congratulations on your retirement. I hope it's a safe and long retirement. I just got to ask you one question. Have you imparted all your wisdom and knowledge to someone who's going to succeed you? Because we all might be a little nervous that those paychecks might not come out of this like this. I'm not going to expect you to answer that. I'm going to assume that's been done.
Let's put it this way, I tried. There are some things I have forgotten, but yeah.
Well, I imagine you might get a phone call or two from some people there in the future about a question, especially in the next two to four weeks. So enjoy your retirement and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Congratulations on your retirement. Hope you can travel. You will enjoy it. I think it's critically important that we have people in our organization that can remember the old stuff because as was mentioned, as you know, we have a lot of policies and we've gone through a lot of changes. And there's always a question, and I think it's critically important that we have somebody who has that institutional memory that can go back and find, why did we do that? You know, 20 years ago or whatever. So I think it is a loss for the county, but I think it's a benefit for you. And congratulations and thank you for everything you've done for us.
Mr. Peters?
Yeah, I wish you the best of luck as well. After 32 years of working here, you know, and I hope you get to enjoy it. Hope you get to travel and do all the things that you want to do. But thank you for your service to the county and I know we all appreciate you.
Thank you. And we just want to say thank you for your service and your longevity, your expertise. And obviously we have a whole fan club here. So thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
And we really appreciate. Let's give her a hand. You have to come back and sell your Easter eggs to the church.
Item D, First Reading of Ordnances. Ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Roanoke, Virginia approving the refinancing of a lease transaction that originally financed various capital projects for the county and authorizing the continued leasing of certain county-owned property, the execution and delivery of a prime lease and a local lease acquisition agreement and financing lease and other related actions. Ms. Lori Gerhart, Director of Finance, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Today I present a proposed ordinance for your approval to authorize the refunding of the county's Virginia Resources Authority, or VRA, a Series 2013B lease revenue bonds. The VRA reached out to the county to inform us of their upcoming fall pooled issuance and the opportunity for us to include a refunding of our 2013B lease revenue bonds. Although the market rates were low in 2013, some of those bonds were sold at a premium and the higher premium coupon rates increased their opportunity for future refunding. The original 2013 bonds were used to build the Benton Library and refund the 2004A VRA bonds, which were used to build the Public Safety Center. This refunding opportunity has been reviewed by our financial advisors and they currently recommend we participate in the VRA pool this fall. The ordinance before you provides the bonds shall result in net debt savings as a percentage of the principal amount of the refunded bonds of at least 3% on a present value basis. If the net present value savings would drop below 3%, then the refunding loan application can be withdrawn as late as the week of October 23. The callable bonds available for refunding total $10.995 million with a remaining maturity of 10 years and are projected to yield a present value savings of 4.3 based on current market conditions. Staff recommends approval of the first reading of the ordinance and scheduling the second reading for September 26, 2023.
Are there any questions from Ms. Gerhart? If there are not, is there a motion to approve the first reading and schedule the second reading for September 26, 2023?
I'll move the motion.
And the second? Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Item two, Ordinance Accepting and Appropriating Funds in the Amount of $3,777,457 from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development in response to the 2022 Award of Funds from the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative Grant and appropriating such funds to the county's grant fund for subsequent distribution to the Roanoke County Economic Development Authority to provide economic development incentives to internet service providers. Mr. Bill Hunter, Director of Information Technology, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I guess you can't call it a housekeeping measure if it's over $3 million. So the ordinance before you is to, is actually good news because it means we're well on our way on these four internet projects that we're now starting to receive money from Department of Housing and Community Development to distribute to the ISPs who are performing this great workforce. So is, in the process of this, I'd like to thank Lori Gerhart and Jessica Beamer for helping me navigate through all this stuff to make sure it gets in the right spot. But this ordinance is to appropriate these funds and move them to the EDA to go to the ISPs. And with approval, I'd like to schedule a second reading for September 26.
Excellent. Are there any questions, Mr. Hunter? Is there a motion to approve the first reading and schedule the second reading for September 26, 2023?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
Item E, Second Reading of Ordnances. Ordinance accepting the donation of approximately 1.4 acres of real property located at Zero Garstview Circle, Roanoke County Tax Map Number 076.12-09-13, and then a lot of zeros. Windsor Hills Magisterial District. Rachel Lauer, Senior Assistant County Attorney, welcome.
Thank you and good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. The owner of Zero Garstview Circle, Mary Elizabeth Radford, wishes to donate the said property to the Board of Supervisors to be held for public use. The property in question contains an existing asphalt path and portions of Mudlet Creek run through it. The county owns an existing 20-foot sanitary sewer easement on the property and a public access trail and greenway easement. In the greenway easement, the county's greenway easement includes a provision stating that the county shall have the right and duty to ensure maintenance of the said greenway easement that runs along the property. The greenway easement encompasses the sanitary sewer easement. In preparation of the board's approval of this donation, Roanoke County staff engaged with a company who conducted an environmental site assessment on the property and there are no conditions to share with you. There is no funding necessary to accept this donation of real property and staff recommends that the board approve the attached ordinance. I personally got an opportunity to meet with Ms. Radford and to discuss the donation and I'm very thankful for this donation and this prospect for the county. She was just a generally lovely, lovely lady.
So are there any questions for staff? Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I would move the approval of the ordinance and accept the donation and thank the Radfords for this wonderful event.
That's kind of cool. Is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Do I need to abstain from this?
You do not, sir. You can vote.
Okay, thank you. I'll vote yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Item F, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordnances. Ordinance vacating a section of unimproved right-of-way referred to as Brittany Road located in the southeasterly direction of the intersection of Brittany Road Route 1224 and Seta Road Route 1221, Hollins Magisterial District. Ms. Lauer again.
Thank you again, Madam Chair and members of the board. And if you'll just be patient with me, there's a lot of history with this property and I think it's important to share it during this presentation. Roanoke County currently owns a small unimproved right-of-way located in a southeasterly direction of the intersection of Brittany Road and Seta Road. And the county has currently no plans to use such right-of-way in the future. Hollins Magisterial District Supervisor, Mr. North, has asked that the right-of-way be vacated and disposed of by law. And I am here presenting this on his behalf. The property is located just off of Challenger Avenue, Route 460. It was part of a piece of property that was subdivided in 1979 to create the Huntridge subdivision. And at the time of this subdivision, the small 6,250-square-foot piece of property was dedicated to the county to hold for public use. The county property was never developed and was never held out for the public as a right-of-way. It's bordered by two residential properties. One is owned by Misty and Lawrence Odie and the other is owned by Mr. Wu and Ms. Liu. These residential property owners were, have been under the reasonable but mistaken impression that the property was conveyed to them back in 1996 and have jointly maintained those properties since that time as an extension of their lawns. The property is also bordered by a large undeveloped property owned by Roanoke County Land Venture Incorporated. This is not the first time this board has considered a vacation of this public right-of-way. On March 22, 1996, Mr. Charles Simpson, then-president of the Roanoke County Land Venture Incorporated, submitted a written request that Roanoke County vacate this portion of right-of-way. As a result of the '96 request from Roanoke County Land Venture, the board acted by ordinance in an attempt to vacate this portion of Brittany Road. County records show that county staff received no objections to the 1996 vacation request. On May 14, 1996, this board voted unanimously to approve the vacation. But at the time pursuant to Virginia law, included the following requirement in the ordinance. The unimproved section of right-of-way is vacated subject to the following conditions. The vacated area of land shall be added and combined by deed or plat to the adjoining properties as provided by law and the petitioner, Roanoke County Land Venture at the time, shall comply with the requirements, including recordation of the necessary documents in connection with this vacation. Roanoke County Land Venture Incorporated never took the necessary steps to satisfy that condition of the 1996 ordinance. And therefore, the ordinance is null and void. Adjacent landowner, Ms. Odie, has reached out to Roanoke County and is in support of this vacation. She is concerned with the prospect of a public road mere feet from her kitchen window and with the accompanying traffic and if the right-of-way is to be developed. Adjacent landowner, Roanoke County Land Venture Incorporated, despite their prior 1996 request, is not in support of this vacation. Virginia law dictates in cases where a lot has been sold, as in this present case, part of a subdivision plot may be vacated by ordinance of the board on motion of one of its members. The recordation of the ordinance now pursuant to Virginia law now shall operate to destroy the force and effect of the recording of the part of the plat so vacated and divest fee simple title to the center line of any streets, alleys, or easements for public passage so vacated and the owners of public lots free and clear of any rights of the public or the other owners of lots shown on the plat. The existing 50-foot unimproved public right-of-way currently contains a two-inch water and gas line. This requires that the county retain an easement for future maintenance of any public utilities. County staff recommends that that public utility easement be reserved pursuant to the ordinance and that can be done by recordation of the attached ordinance that I've included in your packets. There is no associated fiscal impact with this item and county staff does recommend approval of the attached ordinance.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions, Ms. Lauer? Any questions? At this time, we need to go into a public hearing. So we will open the public hearing. There is a three-minute limit to talk on this petition. I have not received any speakers on this petition of you. So we will now close the public hearing on this issue. Are there any further questions for the board, from the board? I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Madam Chair, I move the motion of F1.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Item G, Appointments. Is there any board member that has an appointment that has not yet been given to the clerk? Item H, Consent Agenda. Is any board member wishing to remove an item from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I have a motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. So item I is Citizen Comments and Communications and I have one from Mr. Scaff. And let's see, Mr. Scaff, if you would please come forward and state your name and address.
Welcome.
Thank you. William Scaff, 4815 Farmington Place Court, Roanoke, Virginia, 24018. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My statement is entitled Municipal Government and the Constitution. Subsequent to the Barnett rezoning hearing, I have been citing the United States Constitution to support my positions contrary to the majority vote. This may have seemed peculiar in discussions of municipal actions. Thus, I thought that it would be helpful to provide a justification. The United States Supreme Court in Owen versus City of Independence has found that the Constitution is directly applicable to municipal proceedings. Quote, "A municipality has no discretion to violate the federal constitution. Its dictates are absolute and imperative. And when a court passes judgment on the municipality's conduct, it looks only to whether the municipality has conformed to the requirements of the federal constitution and its statutes." Unquote. As precedent, the decision cites Sterling versus Constantine. Quote, "When there is a substantial showing that the exertion of state power has overridden private rights secured by that Constitution, the subject is necessarily one for judicial inquiry in an appropriate proceeding directed against the individual's charge with the transgression," unquote. These private rights secured by that Constitution are foundationally life, liberty, or property as mentioned in the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments echoing the Declaration. At the local level, zoning is the primary method of protecting property rights. According to Euclid versus Ambler Realty, the Supreme Court's judicial standard for zoning law, quote, "The segregation of residential business and industrial buildings will increase the safety and security of home life, greatly tend to prevent street accidents, especially to children, by reducing the traffic and resulting confusion, decrease noise, and other conditions, preserve a more favorable environment in which to rear children, et cetera," unquote. The Roanoke County Board of Supervisors and the county government frequently use the common good as a reason for rezonings, even those that eliminate residential zonings and encroach on residential neighborhoods. The result is assumed to be increased tax revenue, which will benefit all county residents in the form of enhanced government services. To say, as supervisors and county officials often do, that they will approve rezoning to build a shopping mall because the mall benefits the common good by providing additional shopping opportunities, and those residents who don't like it can move, violates the right of these residents to enjoy the property they chose to purchase. Euclid versus Ambler defines common good, that is general welfare, as the opposite of inserting commercial property into a residential area through rezoning for tax revenue or shopping opportunity. Instead, Euclid defines common good as protecting residential neighborhoods from the intrusion of commercial properties. Quote, "An ordinance forbidding the erection in designated residential districts of business houses, retail stores, and shops and other like establishments cannot be declared clearly arbitrary and unreasonable and without substantial relation to the public health, safety, morals, or general welfare," unquote. Given that the Supreme Court defines the purpose of zoning as protecting residential neighborhoods, rezoning residential property in residential neighborhoods for commercial development in itself constitutes a violation of property rights protected by the Constitution. This includes subjecting residents to commercial noise day and night, nighttime lighting, ruining view sheds, and increasing traffic volume beyond what they experienced in a formerly residential neighborhood. To drive someone from their house through unfavorable rezoning that makes occupation of that house intolerable to them is to violate their right to property. That someone may buy the house that the original owner sold may satisfy county tax revenue accounting, but it does not erase the hardship to the original owner caused by violating their property rights that forced them to sell. Respectfully, individual Board members betray not only residents' trust, but also their inannable rights by not honoring zoning and future land use designations that were in effect when they purchased their properties. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next item is reports. Is there a motion to receive and file the following reports?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Item K is reports and inquiries of Board members. First up is Mr. Peters.
I don't have anything to report.
Mr. North?
Thank you, Madam Chair. VDOT will be holding a designed public hearing under development for a project to provide additional capacity, improve safety, and widening of seven miles of Interstate 81 from two lanes to three lanes in both directions between exit 143 in Roanoke County and exit 150 in Bodatot County. Sound barriers are being considered along the northbound lanes. The designed public hearing will provide an opportunity to learn more about this project and how it will impact adjacent properties and gives you the opportunity to provide input. Details for this meeting are Tuesday, September 19th, a week from the day. Will be held at Lord Bodatot High School from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. in an open house format with VDOT representatives who will be present to answer your questions. If you can't attend the meeting, you can also submit written comments to VDOT by mail or by email by September 29th. You can mail comments to Craig Moore, Project Manager, 731 Harrison Avenue, Salem. You can also email comments to i81-x@143-150@vdot.virginia.gov and reference Exits 143 to 150 widening project. I encourage folks to attend this. This was the good news. The bad news is, while both houses of the Virginia State General Assembly approved $150 million earmarked for more improvements along the I-81 corridor, when it got to the negotiations over the budget, the $150 million was removed, while folks east of Richmond on I-64 got $150 million plus. Now, I know this is a lot of money, and I know that in time, we're going to need to get that money put back on the 81 corridor project, and so we can only hope that in the future, that will occur. On October 2nd, I'll be attending the I-81 Commission Annual Meeting in Lexington, and I'm sure that that topic will be brought up, especially after Senator Obenchain said that it was more likely to get a cure from his cancer than it was to probably get more money for 81 and complete that so it's a safer roadway. So, thank you. Hope you all put your two cents in on that, on both of those items. Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney?
Just one item, Madam Chair. Just want to report to the citizens that several Board members, several of us were able to attend the State of the City address by Mayor Sherman Lee back on August 24th, and it was an excellent program, and glad to see our friends in the city are doing well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Radford?
Yes, Madam Chair, a couple of items. Just wanted to comment on the giftee that my mother just gave to the county. My dad and I purchased that property back in 2002. We developed patio homes. We were very successful. Anytime you can build housing next to a greenway, it is a home run. And we knew when we bought that property that that land was going to have to go to somebody other than us because it would serve a better purpose. It's also a great site if we ever have to do a regional stormwater pond. That is, that's actually been studied to use it for that because part of the creek runs right through it. So you might think we gave you swampland, but it's really, it's a creek with water running through it, and it'll serve well for the Garst Mill Park, too. Another item, I've had, I've emailed Board members about this last couple of days. I've had some residents complain about the deer population in their neighborhood. Started off with one citizen sending me an email asking if we could do something because the deer are destroying his property, his flora, his faunta, his property to where he can't keep plants planted. He did show us, in his email to me, he did show me where several localities north of us have deer management policies. I did not read those in detail, but they're highly dense subdivisions like we have in Roanoke County. Also had another resident call me and told me that she had to erect an $8,000 fence to try to keep the deer out. Not sure that that was successful because they can jump pretty good, but again, she's losing a lot of her, the plantings that she puts in. And my worker, one of my employees, was driving to work last week, and she hit a deer on Bandy Road. She had a small car, wasn't going very fast, went over the deer, the deer bounced right back up and went on to live its happy life. So I'm not sure where we need to go with this. I understand the Board did this, studied this in 2008. It's now 2023. Different localities around us have done different things. So I'm not sure we need a work session, but maybe a discussion amongst us and with the administration, try to figure out how we can, you know, help the citizens. Maybe, I know there's programs out there, Hunting for the Hunger, where you can donate the meat to food shelters. So there's programs out there that we might be able to latch onto and help in some manner. But just want to bring that to everybody's attention that there are more deer than there were in 2008, and they're really everywhere. They're all over my neighborhood, too. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I just have a couple of items that I wanted to mention, and I'm really going to pose this just as a thank you to our staff. I think I'm really proud of what our staff members do and what they can, they're responsive to our suggestions and our concerns, and I know that I had said something about the 11460 West Corridor, and so staff got on it, and there was a great meeting. I wish that more business leaders had attended, but I was very impressed with the number of staff that were involved and what you did to try to encourage that business community to know that, you know, let us know what it takes for you to expand or to improve, what you want to see in the future in that corridor. And so just, I want to give, you know, praise to our staff for doing a great job with that. And in the same way, we had a donation of a flag and a flagpole from Woodman Life and was also a remembrance of the 9/11 day. Was that just yesterday? Just yesterday. And you know what? I was just, I was impressed with the number of staff that were there, and it was really a great event. I could see something similar to that happening every year, just as a way to honor our public safety and in memorance of that horrific day. And that's, that's all I have at this time, but wanted to give that shout out to our staff. They're doing really great things. Item L is work sessions. We have work sessions to discuss the Economic Development Marketing Study with the Board of Supervisors, Ms. Megan Baker, Director of Economic Development, and a work session on the County of Roanoke budget with Lori Gerhart, Director of Finance and Management Services, and Mr. Kay Wood, County Administrator. From there, we will go into a closed meeting, and at this time, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. The real property that will be discussed is located in the Catawba Magisterial District. In Section 2.2-3711A5, discussion concerning the expansion of existing businesses where no previous announcement has been made of the business's interest in locating or expanding their facilities in Roanoke County. Specifically, such locations or expansions are proposed to occur in the Catawba, K Springs, and Hollins Magisterial Districts. Do I have a second?
Sure.
And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes, and so the Board will now recess to the third floor for work sessions and closed sessions. Thank you.